Here.
Commissioner Naransik.
Here.
And Commissioner Conse.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, then item number two is for public comments and these are for items that aren't on the agenda. What we do is make sure that there's time for people to bring up an item that they want to have us know about or give us feedback on, or just update us in general. Sometimes that leads to follow-up discussions with the with the commission and sometimes action, as this happened in the past. So with that, I'll go ahead and open the public comment section for items that aren't on the agenda. And I'm not seeing any waving or saying that they want to speak on something not on the agenda. So I'll go ahead and close the public public comment section and bring us to item number three. On the approval of minutes from the last meeting.
I move.
All right, there's a move. I just to go on the comment I say is it's clear that Mr. Elaine had a lot to opine about about at that last.
Wow, no kidding. No kidding.
All right, but do you have a second on that?
Second.
Move is seconded. Have a roll call, please.
Charlie.
Yes.
Commissioner Lam.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Naransik.
Yes.
Commissioner Conse.
Yeah.
All right, good. So item item number four is public hearings and those three items there. And let me just go over the procedures we use for this. What we do is on each item, we start with an overview from staff. And then there's dialogue with the commission in terms of questions of staff. And then we open up our public comment and then we have public comment, starting with the applicant or the representative. Then we close the public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. And you do that on every item. If anyone shows up later on, I'll go through the overview so that nobody slept out of the procedure so that they understand what's going on. So with that, we'll start with item four A, which is the amendments to the Atherton Minister Code, Chapter eight dot fourteen on hysterical hysterical historical artifacts. With that, then Stephanie, this is for you to go through, right, with this?
It is, yes, thank you.
And for those of you who weren't here the last time, this is a continuation of the discussion we had in the last session. We held it over to get more information and that's why we're back on the top.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. It's such nice stuff is asking for your review and consideration and providing a recommendation to the city council. Consider amendments that would adopt a historical preservation ordinance. And as you mentioned, this item was discussed and continued from your January meeting. So as such, we did provide a link within the staff report and agenda materials back to the January planning meetings. That does have more details, so I will just begin with a brief summary overview of the proposed ordinance itself. So the approach of this draft ordinance is to create a comprehensive historical preservation ordinance for the town by taking existing regulations that the town already has pertaining to historical artifacts. Those include such things as fences and statues and fountains and combining them with a new set of regulations that addresses historical buildings, specifically single-family homes, which currently has no historic preservation regulation or guidelines associated with them. So as it relates to historic properties or homes, the proposed ordinance is effectively creating a program that would allow allow a single-family residential property within town to obtain formal historical designation. Such formal historical designation can be issued either at the federal, state, or local level in accordance with state law. So if a property owner was to voluntarily choose to attempt to designate their home historic and be added to the town's historical registrar, they are then committed in the preservation of such building and would be subject to a more detailed review of any future improvements to the building that would be held to a review that demonstrated consistency with the California State Secretary of Interior Standards that pertains to historical rehabilitation. So those are state guidelines. By simply having a home designated as historic, a property owner would not receive any kind of tax break, nor does the ordinance attempt to limit the amount of properties within town that could voluntarily request such historical designation. So that's the first big part of the draft ordinance. The second component, which is related but somewhat independent, as I will describe, of the ordinance is related to the creation of both procedures and related processes and regulations for an owner who, once they've obtained that historical designation, again, either at the federal, state, or local level, they could subsequently request to enter into a Mills Act contract or what we are referring to within the draft ordinance as a historical property contract with the town. So what this means is that that property could request historical designation, but not necessarily add this additional tier of a historical property contract on top of it. If a property owner was to choose to go to the secondary route, by doing such, they would be entering into a legally binding agreement with the town to receive property tax relief in exchange for their legal commitment to implement what is described in the ordinance as a ten-year restoration, rehabilitation, and maintenance plan. Basically, it's a list or a ten-year look ahead of the type of improvements, the costs associated with those improvements, and the schedule to implement those improvements to preserve their historical building. So overall, the purpose of that contract is to allocate the reduced or the property tax savings to preserve the character of the historic building. So the actual monetary amount of the property tax reduction is calculated by the San Mateo County Assessors Office through a prescribed, very complex formula that's established by the California State Board of Equalization. I do note on on the meeting here, we do have a senior appraiser, Ms. Christine Talivia Aguirre from the San Mateo County Assessors Office. So if there's any detailed questions regarding how those monies are calculated, I would love if Christine could chime in. Thank you, Christine, for attending. So I'll just continue on and wrap up my presentation here. But so unlike the process that's drafted in the ordinance, which does not limit the amount of properties that could request historic designation, the ordinance does propose a limit on the amount of historical property contracts that the town could consider at any one time. Specifically, it's proposed that no more than five contracts or an aggregate amount of $25,000 in property tax loss to the town could occur at any one time. So for example, there could be 50 properties that voluntarily choose to come to the town and request local historic designation. And those 50 properties, should they meet the required conditions for historical designation, could be issued such historical designation. But of those 50 properties, depending on what their reduced property tax value would be, the way the ordinance is drafted, only five of them, or perhaps more, depending on what that total property tax reduction is, cannot exceed $25,000. And so the numbers of a five-contract limit or a $25,000 aggregate annual property tax loss, that was a result of discussion by the city council in their prior study sessions as a means at trying to prevent any significant financial incurrence by the town. The and then lastly, as it relates to proposing a cap on the number and or monetary amount, we also found that that is a practice that is shared in other jurisdictions, not all jurisdictions, but in some jurisdictions that do have historical preservation ordinances, such as this draft ordinance that you're being asked to consider.
All right, great.
Um, just a few more tidbits on property tax and as it relates to the Mills Act subsection of the historical preservation ordinance. And so while the actual property tax savings will vary from property to property, depending on when the property was built, what their baseline tax assessment is, the condition of the property, a various means of other criteria, it is estimated that a property that obtains a historical property contract would be allowed anywhere between a 40% to 60% property tax reduction. So the San Mateo County Assessors Office was generous in creating a hypothetical calculation. Again, nothing real, but taking a property within town and running that formula to see what, at the end of the day, the actual property tax reduction loss to the town would occur. And that's included in the staff report. So just in summary, that property, based on 2021 numbers, at $8.2 million, if they were to apply that State Board of Equalization formula, if it did have a Mills Act contract, would result in an approximate $47,000 property tax savings to the owner. And all of that money goes to the town, only 10.6% of 1% of the tax goes to the town. So what that results in is an estimated approximately $4,200 annual financial loss to the town. So that was created, or excuse me, not created, but included in the staff report just to try to paint a example picture on what that would mean should a property of around $8 million choose to go forward with the process of a Mills Act contract. So at your meeting in January, there was also some direction that was given to staff to provide some comparisons, best practices for other jurisdictions, as well as address or look into any other problematic issues such jurisdictions face or have faced with these Mills Act or historical property contracts. And the feedback that we got from outreach and to numerous outside jurisdictions was the recommendation that to require these periodic inspections of the property and really early evaluation on the proposed series of improvements to assure that they met Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation, basically so that the scope of their work is indeed maintaining that historic character integrity of the property was vetted early on, so you weren't having to go back and try to address that after the fact. And we also were informed generally from these jurisdictions that placing the responsibility on the property owner for confirmation seemed to be working well for those towns, removed some of the onus from the town and assurances that the property owner would would follow through with what they were saying that they would do. And the draft ordinance before you tonight is found to have language that adequately addresses all of those issues that I just made mention of. It does have a robust robust section within it that does outline the town's provisions and enforcement actions should a contract ever become in violation with the language. And I just would conclude that statement by noting that the entire draft historical preservation ordinance and particularly the enforcement and violations subsection was drafted in concert with the town attorney. So we did feel that the language did provide the town a pretty strong legal footprint. You know, should things ever go awry in the future if the ordinance was adopted. Um, lastly, I just wanted to make note that there was one item of public comment that has been received on this item. It was included in the staff report and it was an a comment expressing support for adoption of such an ordinance. So with that, I am happy to answer any additional questions that the commission may have regarding the ordinance or its purpose and intent.
Okay, any questions? All my questions were answered in your follow-up, Stephanie and Christine. Thank you for showing up and providing the information that actually made it clearer in the report than we had last time. So appreciate the information. Any any questions of staff on this one?
Yeah, quick question. Stephanie, as always, thank you. Answer all my questions. Couple of things that I had raised last time was where did we get the $25,000 figure? And thank you for doing a comparative analysis. So I'm comfortable with the $25,000 figure. I think Saratoga has, what, three? Limit of three contracts? And Belvedere has 25,000. So I think we're in the ballpark. Thank you for that. The other thing I I'd note here is from your staff report, it looks like some of these jurisdictions have special commissions for determining, you know, the historic status. And that's all good. In our draft, it looks like it's the city council that does that, right? And and that's excellent because it's less work for us. So completely. I completely support that. So thank you very much, Stephanie, for that.
So just one point of clarification that most of those other jurisdictions, while they do have an additional advisory commission or committee, however they're crafted, that's specific just to historical property issue issues or properties. All of those are advisory, for the most part, to the planning commission and then in which the planning commission is advisory to the council. So it follows that same sort of step tier, just the fact that we we, the town, do not have that advisory commission dedicated specifically to historic preservation.
Well, if we need one, I appoint Eric.
I second.
There you go. There you go. All right. Yeah, I this is one of those situations where everybody steps back and you're you're stuck with it.
Especially with that haircut. He's the perfect guy for it. I thought he was going to show up as Cupid, being that it's Valentine, Valentine's Day. I thought we were going to have Cupid run in the meeting.
No, no, I'm fine. All right. Anything else? Any Nancy or Gabby?
Yeah, yes, Eric, I have a comment here. At the top of page four, they refer to this ordinance as newly titled Historic Preservation Ordinance, which indeed it should be. However, further down, they call it Historical Preservation. And I I'm not in favor of adding the AL to that, as in National Trust for Historic Preservation. They just use the IC ending. So that's kind of a nitpicky thing, but I'd like to clarify that it should be Historic Preservation, not Historical Preservation.
That's a good.
All agree?
Yeah, I that's a good, yeah.
Okay, good catch.
Stephanie, I had a question as well. This is Gabby. With in certain jurisdictions with the Mills Act, when people enter into that, you know, it's a ten-year contract, as you specified, you explained very well. Is there an exemption if you want to get out of that? Because some homeowners decide to sell their property and they may not want that as part of, you know, selling their property because I think there's some anti-demolition conditions that you can't demolish the historical property if it's under Mills Act. Is there anything that's in the writing to address that if somebody wants to exempt out of that? Normally, there's a in certain, like in Los Angeles, you have to pay a few hundred thousand dollars to get out of the Hill Mills Act, depending on the value of the of the property.
Yeah, we do have language within the ordinance that speaks to the de-selection of a historic property or artifact. And the language within the actual contract, which is not part of the ordinance, it would be an outside document. Yes, it has that on the radar. And we've been looking into contracts that other local jurisdictions have adopted. They're all public record. We've looked at Redwood City. We've looked at Palo Alto. I've looked at a series of jurisdictions. They're all a little different. So we hope to kind of take the best out of all of it and work with the San Mateo County Assessors Office as well. If the ordinance is adopted and creating a sort of a template contract, if you will, that covers all of that. But that's, yeah, a good point that we need to assure is integrated in.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hello, this is Christine. I had one comment to make.
Yes, Christine, can you hold up just a minute? I'll make it part of the public comment section. Is that all right?
That's fine.
Is it a clarification for the commission? Is that what it is?
Uh, just a little one, yes.
Uh, all right, I'll go ahead.
So what it is, is the Mills Act is a rolling. It's a rolling period. So every January first, the the contract automatically renews for 10 years. And if if the original owner sells the property, the Mills Act does not go with that person, the Mills Act stays with the property. So if John sold to Tom, Tom would still be able to, he would still be under the rules of the Mills Act contract or the historic contract that you have. And he would still be able to benefit from the Mills Act restricted valuations.
And if the and if the first owner decided that it was going to be detrimental to their ability to sell, they could go through the process to remove the act before they put it up for for sale. Is that correct?
Yes, they could, but according to the State Board of Equalization rules, there's supposed to be some sort of penalty fee.
Yes.
Is if it is not within the if it's within that 10 years and not at the end of the tenure period.
Great. Yeah, that's that's a good, that's a good way to make sure it's not overused.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was getting at, too, because you'll find, you know, Christine and in Atherton, there are a lot of older properties that developers just want total total, and they just want the land and build on it. So so if an owner sells it, if they have to retract that, then there would be a penalty fee, like you're saying. To move the.
Can I make it? Can I make a quick comment?
Yeah, Randy.
I I've I've said that I Steph, I I know you guys have put a ton of work into this. These are really complicated. The Mills Act stuff and all the other things that we're talking about tonight are really complicated.
Yeah.
I I I'm really worried that, I mean, we've always been careful in Atherton not to over over encumber the planning department, the planning commission, everybody else, neighbors, et cetera. I'm all for historic preservation. I want to go on record with saying that. I just want to make sure that people get into this for the right reason. I the the fact that it's limited, and I don't want to give an opinion, Eric, so I'm not going to give an opinion till later. But I would just say, just the one thing that I think we want to be really careful about is is people will do just about anything to avoid property taxes, no matter what their potential income is and et cetera, et cetera. I just don't want a lot of blowback coming back to us. If the council wants to take the action, that's great. So be it. I I don't live in a historic property. Maybe some of you do. But I I just think that we we start opening this up, it's going to be a really complicated mess that we're I almost assure everyone, we're going to hear this again. So all I'm just saying is just know that this is a very different conversation, excuse me, a different conversation in terms of of how complicated it is. I I just want everybody to know that. If if all we're doing is recommending to the council to do it, that's great. If we've benchmarked against other cities and towns that have done it and they figured out five properties, 25,000, blah, blah, blah. It just seems odd to me that we're 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 doing these weird limits on this when historic preservation should be a goal for everybody, right? And and then we're we're putting a budget to it and all the stuff that just.
Well, that's one of the things I we were dealing with last time. So let's go ahead and open the public comment. Come back. Because I agree with you. There's many points about what you made, Randy, that I want to.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, I know.
Okay, great. So we'll go ahead and open the public comments. If I can get my finger by the camera. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public comment section and and is there anyone here to to speak on this item? All right, nobody's waving their hand. John doesn't have it. Has his picture up, but he's not making any noise. Everybody else is sitting there waiting for the next two items. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and close the public comment section and bring it back for discussion and action as appropriate with the commission. So my I'll start up. Randy, I totally agree that this is a thing that can be either too cumbersome or misused or well-intended used and and not not used wisely. And then people get themselves wrapped around the axle that they didn't know they were getting involved with. So I think it'll be important early on to really monitor what kind of requests we're getting, you know, so that that could that could indicate, one, we have to rethink about some of the aspects of it. But also, the reason that's here is not because we woke up and said, hey, let's have a historic historic ordinance. It was because the 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 town town council said that we need to take an action on this and we're going to give it to us. So they actually studied this before they gave it to us. So my my understanding is that they wanted to make sure that whatever they they were leaning towards made sense to them for this ordinance. So that's the only reason that I think that we're giving them a recommendation from the planning side. And you're right, I I think the confusing part for me last time was the same is the same this time. As long as it is, if the if there's if anyone in the town could come forward and say, this is a historic place and there's then there's no tax benefit to them, then if you wanted to call it that, then then let's let's talk about that. When you start putting the dollar limit on the on it, it's it gets away from what's historic and not for me. But this is Stephanie, I talked about this today, was the idea that, okay, we can have 20 historic designated homes, but this is a limit of five or 25,000, whichever comes first, I guess, on the tax liability. Stephanie, is that correct?
So through the chair, I'm almost, I would ask to look at it as two separate processes, interrelated but independent at the same time. So this draft historical preservation ordinance is creating new language, new regulations, and new processes associated with the request for a property owner who wants to have formal historical designation of their home. Again, that can be at a federal registrar. There's several of those. There are several state registrars or at the local level, one that we're creating. And what that does is that preserves the character and integrity of that home. Okay? It also, then that property owner, if they want to do improvements to it, they have to do their improvements under the California Historical Building Code, unlike the regular California Building Code. But that's something that they would need to want to do in obtaining such designation. So as Charlie, as you mentioned, there could be 50 properties within town that that want to do this. And it's not just, I submit an application and I get it. They would have to also hire the services of a licensed historian or professional historical architect who would prepare an evaluation criteria memorandum that evaluates the context of the home and makes a formal recommendation as to whether or not such home triggers any of the criteria for such historical designation. So that's sort of phase one, if you will. If a property owner goes through that process on their own, and they could go through that process at the federal or state level today and not come to the town, and they can do that, they can get federal or state designation today. That's their own process and own efforts that they have to go through. But if they want to come back and then after they get that designation, add this other tier of a proposed Mills Act or historical property contract, it's a whole separate set of process. It's a whole separate regulation, and it's only under that umbrella in which this issue of property tax incentives or reductions occur. So you could have the 100 properties that obtained historical designation, but not all of them may want the Mills Act contract because that then bounds them to a tighter follow-up. They have to prepare the maintenance plan for 10 years. They have to follow through with that maintenance plan for 10 years. And in exchange, they get that property tax reduction.
Right. Okay.
So who becomes the who becomes the decision maker on who gets Mills Act protection and who doesn't? Hopefully not us.
The way the ordinance is drafted, similar to what we're doing tonight, we go to the planning commission for a review and a recommendation to the council, and the council takes the final action on it, is the way that the ordinance is drafted and what we found pretty consistent throughout other jurisdictions that have it. Except for those jurisdictions that have that advisory, historical advisory board that I mentioned, then it would not be a three-step process. Unlike the way that this ordinance is drafted, it's effectively a two-step process.
Yeah.
I have a question. Does Stephanie, does the town hold the the floor plans or the architectural plans for some of these historical homes? Because I've looked into that myself. And pre, I think, 1940s, the town doesn't have those records that some, you know, other cities do have. So if you're trying to set up, you know, you know, regulations and historical preservation of character, some of that's not not available anymore. I mean, it can be obviously interpreted in a nice manner, but when you read about the history of Atherton, the older homes. But is there anything available? I mean, do you know how old the records go back in terms of architectural design of the homes?
Yeah, I mean, it varies.
The 1920s and 30s?
Yeah, thank you. So it could. It varies. It varies on the properties. It varies on the record-keeping. But the onus is on the property owner. So they'd have to hire, again, like I mentioned, their own licensed historian, licensed historical architect, who would then go create those plans and evaluate the existing conditions of the home to see if it met the criteria in order to nominate it for historical designation. So just because a home is 70 years old, it there may have been improvements made to it that disqualify it, for example, of meeting those criteria. So there's a series of checks and balances and and what would happen before that property obtained such historical designation.
So.
My my guess is there's very few in in the town right now that are qualified for that, but from what I've seen.
Yeah, so it goes back to it goes back to. Yeah, so it, it goes back to, it goes back to a couple of things, Stephanie, a question for you then. One, the, it's, is, it's my understanding that the, that the town council wants us to make a, make a review of this, is that, is that correct, or are they saying, are they saying that, you know, we ought to look into this? I, I got the impression that they'd spent so much time on it, that they decided that they wanted something, and they just want to make sure our review is, is included, is that correct?
That's correct. The council originally directed staff to start evaluating this topic of historical preservation. They considered it at two study sessions, just conceptually discussing ideas, and then directed staff to prepare an ordinance, a formal ordinance regarding historical preservation to bring to the planning commission for your review and consideration. And anytime that an ordinance is directed to the planning commission for a recommendation to the council, the commission does have the purview to go through and make any suggested amendments, changes. If they felt that those suggested changes or amendments would get them to a point of being able to recommend that the council approve it. The commission also has the option, should you not find that the ordinance is drafted, meets the intent of the general plan, to recommend that the council not adopt the ordinance. And if that was the action that the commission took, we would just ask for a little bit of detail as to why, and we then pass that information along ultimately once an action is, or a vote is taken by the commission to the council at their next meeting.
All right. Well, I, I don't know if the, if the council sort of focused on this, but this is a step towards design criteria. And, and if they're comfortable tiptoeing down that, you know, that aisle, this is the first, this is the first, the time that the, that the town will actually get involved with design standards. And so, that creates a, a new excitement for the planning commission and a new excitement for the council. As long as they're aware, I would say, if, if we go ahead with this, that we do an evaluation in a year just in terms of the overall process and, and make sure that we're comfortable with the way it's, it's, it's being used and implemented and the workload it creates. Does that sound reasonable, Randy? Something like that?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you that, that if you want to amend, if you want to amend the motion to, for that, yes. But, my, you guys know where I've been on this, from day one, however many years ago I've started being on committees and commissions in Atherton. Let's do what we can to help staff make decisions and, 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 and support their decisions and, and go from there. Sorry, didn't realize my thing was not. But, that's been my goal the entire time. Let's clear the way so that they can make as many decisions at a staff level as they can.
Right.
Not that come, you know, that we, let's not hamstring them. This just feels really half-baked to me. I, I'm sure Steph and Jen and all the other people that have been part of this have made, have put a ton of work in, so I don't mean to criticize. But, i- it's, and it's not, it's just, I don't know where the council came from this, and, and this just feels like this is one of those things that could get way, way out of control.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I would be an absolute no to this, the way it's, the, the motion is now. If you want to amend it, that we revisit it, that's great. I just think we're going to have a lot of dissension on it. I, and, but I'm, I'm for historic preservation, I just want to say that again.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I am, I am too, you know, I own, own a historic home as well. But, you know, you'll find that when you read the history of Atherton, a lot of these homes, I live in Mr. Alston's home, these are built as summer homes, some of them don't even have insulation, so some of the standards of even, per se, the historical character, of course, the outside, the exterior is, is pursuant to that. But, interior-wise, I'm not sure what the standards would be for most people. As homeowners, we make decisions on how to improve our homes, but, you know, most people would not want to designate their house as a historic property, because a lot of the history is people from San Francisco, a lot of the wealthy barons and bank owners use Atherton as a summer home, which is very surprising, when, you know, when you buy into the property. But, um, so it's, it's hard to measure how the standards would be met in our community, and maybe other people that own historic homes may have the same opinion, or maybe differing opinions from, from my own. So, I think it, it is replete with a lot of question marks, but I, I'm totally, like Randy, I'm very for historic preservation, but when you find that the home, something that's eighty years old, has not been, it's maintained well, but, you know, it's, it's not maybe for, for, for different reasons, it's, it's hard to measure what's historic and not historic.
Yeah, so Stephanie, I'll bring it back to you and, and, and bring in Randy's question. Is this going to make your life easier or harder?
Adoption of the ordinance?
Yes.
Um, I, I wouldn't describe anything as easier or harder, I think it's just a new ordinance, it's new regulations that need to be implemented, but I also don't feel that we really will get, you know, a, a huge amount of properties coming in. I've had maybe one or two people inquire about it because of the limitations and restrictions that that property owner will be placing upon themselves as it relates to, first of all, just the process itself, the times and the monies you think the property would really want or need to get those types of incentives and understand the commitment level to it, so.
All right, Perry, Perry or Nancy, you have anything on this before we get motion or not?
No, I, I'm okay with it.
Perry? You're on mute. Perry, you're on mute.
I'm surprised you mentioned that, because people tend to like me on mute. Well, I, 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 I share the concern, but I also measure these things by what other jurisdictions are doing. Ultimately, I, I think there is, there, there's always an exercise in applying categories. There's always an exercise in judgment. And the question is, do we have fair, measurable criteria for exercising that judgment? You know, is, and, and so based on that, when I look at the I look at the draft, it, it seems to satisfy that decision-making criteria for me. So, I, I have a view on this, and I, and I understand Randy's view and, and the views of others here. I, I, I tend to, I, I would support a motion, let's say, and those are my only comments.
All right, good, you want to make it?
I will. I moved that the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt amendments to repeal and replace chapter eight dot one four historical art, historical artifacts and retitle to historical preservation based on the finding and for the reasons as outlined in the staff report.
Historic preservations, right? Historic.
Did, did we amend that? Okay, historic preservations.
Yeah.
Aye, aye.
There's a moment second. All right, I need, any more discussion on this before we take a, take a roll call? Okay, go ahead and we'll start with the roll call. Yes, but I really do want to watch this for the first year. I won't hear, I won't be here to, to watch it, but I think suggest you all do.
Commissioner Lamb?
No.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gornsec?
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Conce?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry.
All right, and, and make, and make sure you make your presentation, Stephanie, to the commission that you highlight the, the things that Randy brought up in particular, okay, just so they're aware of what they're, and also the comment about design, design review, but is another tippy-toe thing that they should make, definitely be aware of, that they're not thinking of it that way. Okay, thank you all for waiting. I know that was a scintillating conversation for you. And, and Christine, thank you for coming and spending the time with us, we'll see you again, I'm sure, I'm sure, thank you a lot. We'll see, let's go to item four B, with special structures permit for one ninety-six Patricia Avenue. And we'll start with a, and John, I see you came, popped in a little bit after my presentation about the process, just to make sure you're up to speed on it. What we're going to do is we hear from staff an overview of the, of the item, then questions from commission to the staff on anything that comes up. And then, we hear from the applicant or the representative in a public hearing, you hear from anyone else in the public hearing that wants to speak on the item. Then we close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. So, that's the overview of our process. All right, so with that, item four B, then let's go ahead. Rob, are you on this one, or Stephanie?
That's me as well.
All right, good, go for it.
Thank you. Rob, if you could please pull up the one image. Thank you. So, tonight, you are being asked to consider a special structures permit to allow a swimming pool to have the same front yard setback as the main residence for the property at one ninety-six Patricia Drive. You see here on the screen is an outline of the existing property boundaries. You can see that the site itself is in a regular pie-shaped lot. It has a twenty-five foot easement, roadway easement, excuse me, I should specify. That, as well as a town-maintained sort of vegetated triangular piece of land in the front of it. So, if you're looking here on the screen, on the far left, you can see the words proposed site plan that's overlaid on top of that triangular piece of town-maintained vegetated island. And then the darkest line close to that, take that line and go twenty-five feet back, that's that twenty-five foot roadway easement that I made mention of. And then that second dark line indicates the front property line of the site. So, in January of last year, the commission did grant a variance for this property to allow for a forty-five foot setback from the front property line. So, again, looking at the left of the screen, it's that second in darker dashed line, that's the front property line. Going forty-five feet back from that, on this image, you can see outlined there in another dashed line, kind of encompassed by yellow and then some gray boxes. That yellow indicates the main buildable area for the site based on setbacks as established. So, after receiving this approval for the forty-five foot front yard setback line, where sixty feet would have otherwise been required due to the irregular and unique shape of the slot, the property owner and architectural team was subsequently able to confirm and understand their associated setbacks and buildable area as shown here and worked through some conceptual designs to locate the proposed swimming pool shown there in blue that is located within the main buildable area, which creates setbacks at both the side and the rear that are significantly larger than otherwise is required for a swimming pool. However, also then subsequently puts them in the need to obtain a special structures permit for the proposed forty-five foot front yard setback line where it would have either needed to be thirty feet back behind the front line of the main house or a hundred and twenty feet back from the established front property line. That's why the application is here tonight before the commission. The applicants are proposing to put this swimming pool in its situated location to avoid the tree protection zones of some existing heritage trees located in the back corner section of the property. You can see they're kind of highlighted in blue and shaded it in gray. That's an area otherwise accessory structures could be located as well as trying to pull it away from neighboring properties for increased setbacks from those neighbors to increase their privacies and maintain that as well. So, as such, and combined with the physical layout of this uniquely shaped lot, the adjacent roadway as well as that vegetated island combined with the robust replanting plan that was included as part of the planning admissions packet, staff does believe that the application meets the three required findings in order to consider approving a special, special structures permit at this site to let the swimming pool have the same setback as the main residence. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I do see the property owner and his architect are here as well.
Any questions?
Not from me.
I just got one, and I just want to verify the reading of the plan. I see a light line sort of surrounding the pool, is that a, is that a fence that'll be around the pool?
No, that sort of dashed, are you referring to that dashed black lighter line?
No, actually, yeah, and it's not a dat- well, this, the one I'm, the, the, the map I'm looking at has a sort of a light, non-dashed line all around it. But, but, there's, is there a fence around it or not?
I'd like to have the applicants or architect answer that question, but I'm thinking that might just be the pool coping around the edge of the water line.
Yeah, on this map it is, there's another one that has, I, I want to make sure, I want to make sure that the fence, because when I, first of all, when I saw the other, how don't we already approve this plan? Because I, and then I went up to it, and oh yeah, we approved it, this is an additional request on top of the same item, so that's, all right, I'll wait for the, I'll wait for the feedback from the architect or the, or the applicant. Any other questions before I open a public hearing?
No questions.
All right, good, then I'll go ahead and open the public comment section, and we'll start with the applicant or their representative. Who would that be?
Hi, that's, my name is Jason Alden with Alden Architecture. I'm the architect for the owner, Paul and Claudia Mickovich, and Paul is actually here attending the meeting as well.
All right.
I will share my screen with the same documents and just to highlight some, some items as well. So, what I have here, the, the property, just, this is just showing in yellow the, the main house buildable area and our proposed design. And to answer your, your question, Commissioner, the, the outline, the lighter outline around the, the dark pool blue is just a flush coping stone. It is not something that is above grade. It's just part of the hardscape. The, uh, one thing.
Would there be a fence?
Excuse me?
Would there be a fence around that area?
The, the, the property will have a fence surrounding the entire property. So, we will have our typical six-foot-high perimeter fence, but no, no fencing around the immediate pool itself.
Okay, and the reason I ask it, because right now, when you drive up, you can see right back to the spot of the half, or, or half of the pool would be. I, I, I believe, so, all I was, all I was concerned about is making it sort of what I've heard to, before, called an attractive nuisance, I mean, that, it would, so it'll be safe, safely guarded by a fence?
Correct, correct. The whole property will be closed off, including there's a driveway gate, pedestrian gates that'll be closed and locked.
Okay, great, thank you. That, that was my one, one question. Go ahead.
The, um, one of the first things we did when we started working on this project was, we met with Sally Benst to assess the, the heritage trees, and you can see here up in the upper right-hand corner as well as the, the right-hand side, there's several heritage trees existing. And there, we even looked at an option of putting the pool where the existing pool is today. But Sally said, due to the, the, the tree locations, we could not place the pool in its existing location and thereby shifting it downward would have a kind of a negative impact for us on the main house footprint. We felt that this position was something that was, we thought is both advantageous to us for the main house, but also, as Stephanie mentioned, it really pulls the pool away from the neighbors. This, the ADU to the north creates a barrier, so, as well as the main house to the neighbor on the, on the east, at the east side. Both are really, this are protect, we're protecting the pool, we're surrounding it with buildings so that the, any noise that travels is, is farthest away from the neighbors. Our original idea was to fit the pool inside the buildable area, as you can see here in the, the yellow. I was hoping that the pool would become an integrated structure to the house. In fact, we were exploring this idea of connecting the, the foundation system so that we would be, you know, basically have the pool in this position without having to apply for a special structures permit. But, the building department did not think it was integrated enough, and so that's why we are here today. Keeping the pool still inside the buildable area, but projecting it forward, and the thinking here is with, working with our landscape architects, we will have a six-foot-high solid wood cedar fence with additional, uh, uh, series of laurel hedge along the whole perimeter as, as part of our landscape screening. In addition to that, we will be planting some trees, and so there's going to be several layers between the pool and the, and the public right-of-way. And as Stephanie mentioned, this island is also playing a part in this, because the, the neighbor across on the west side is very far away from our pool position and, and the front yard due to the curvature of the property. So, we feel like we're, we're positioning the pool in a, in a place that works well with, with neighbors in terms of noise. And I just want to point out here, if And I just want to point out here, if. If the lot was more exilinier in shape, we would have a, a normal setback from the front of the house. Right now you can see the front. It's, it's sixty feet back from the front of the house, but I just wanted to point out how the pie shaped property kind of creates its own challenges with. With this, you know, its position relative to the main house.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, any questions?
Uh, my only normal question is have you reached out to neighbors, everybody else?
Yes, um, Paul, um, has, has, and Connie have gone to all the neighbors in the vicinity and have discussed this project with them.
Yeah, yeah, just echo that. Yeah, I, I went through, you know, when we're going through the variance prop, uh, process and, and talked to all the neighbors and. And, uh, let them know, um, you know, what we were proposing, um, with regards to moving the property forward. And, uh, had a discussion at that point with them.
And Paul, just for the record, could you introduce yourself up to their, to, so that you're on the record?
Oh, sure. It's, uh, Paul Mixovich. You know, I'm the, the property owner at one ninety-six Patricia.
Thanks, Paul.
No opposition staff? Nobody's, nobody's reached out?
No, town has not received any comments, uh, in, in any of ours.
Okay, I'm good.
So, can I, I'm John Dwayne. I'm your neighbor to the north. Uh, Paul, we must have been out of town when you reached out because neither Kathy or I. Spoke to about it. So I, we just got the notice from the town. That's why I'm here just to hear what you're doing. Um, so.
And John, I, and I, I did, I spoke with Kathy, you know, when we first started the process, uh. You know, and, yeah, you know, reached out to her and that we were going to be, you know, with the variance and. Kind of the idea with the, the, what we're going to do with the property. So I did speak to her at one point.
Yeah, I guess it's not about the specifics. That's fine. Uh, I, I have one question just about the. The structure to the north of the pool, which is that the existing pool house or is that a new full house?
Yeah, and, and that, that's, that's, yeah, that's, that's a question that commission will take back to the applicant. Like we kind of like, i- in a normal public session, it'd be easy to sort of control this, but we kind of don't like to have a rolling conversation as much, uh. So let's, let's, let's come up, uh. John, you want to answer that one? Or, or, I mean, Paul, will you want to answer that one?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to answer it.
Or Jason? Jason, do you have an answer on that one?
Oh yeah, it's, it's a, it's a new structure. It's an, um, an ADU. Uh, that is, um, placed up on the, on the north end of the property.
And that's within code, right?
Correct, yes.
So that's, that's not something that we would be able to, that we would be ruling on tonight. We're just, we're just talking about the pool tonight.
No, no, I understand. I just, I couldn't tell what that dotted line is that goes through the, the middle of it. Um.
Right, I can clarify, ADUs, um, you're allowed to place them within the ten foot setback. Uh, to, that just, it's in the, uh, planning code. It just, I, I assume that it was added to just give, uh, property owners a little bit more flexibility with placing the ADUs.
How far off the, uh, the fence line is it?
You can encroach the ten foot setback by, by four feet. So it's six feet away from the property line.
All right, that's. All right, John, anything else before we bring you back to the commission?
No.
All right. All right, anyone else here to speak on the item? Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and then bring it back to the commission for discussion and actions appropriate. Uh, anyone of us start on this one?
Yeah, I, I, uh, I have no issues with the staff report. I don't have any questions. Same, same for me.
Likewise.
Gabby, are you okay on this one?
Me too.
Yeah, this one's pretty straightforward. Actually, I, I consider this to be the best spot for the pool if you have it. Uh, on that property, so. Uh, that's, I had no problem with it. All right. So I'll need to motion, I can make the motion if nobody else is.
Sure.
All right, then I'll move that the planning commission approved this stretch, uh, special structures permit. At one ninety-six Patricia Drive based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the draft, uh, special structures permit. To allow the detached accessory structure swimming pool to have the same front yard setback for the. Main residence and for the, the reasons enumerated in the staff report and with the conditions stated in this special structures permit.
I'll second.
Move and seconded. Have a, can I have a roll call, please? Stephanie?
Caroline.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Narnsec.
Yes.
Commissioner Conse.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Okay. Thank you for waiting and, uh, thank you for doing your homework. It made it easier for us. All right, Jason, we'll see you again. I've seen you before, so I'm sure you'll be back.
Sure, thanks.
All right, uh, item four C, the special structures permit, uh, at one fifty-one Laurel Street. Which by the way, I walk, I drove by twice before I actually saw the driveway. So I went, okay. All right, with that, uh, uh, we'll go ahead, uh, and start with a staff over, staff report overview. And, uh, Ralph, are you the, 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 uh, person on this one?
Yes, I'll even meet Charlie.
All right, good. Go for it.
Apologies. My good evening commissioners. So one fifty-one Laurel Street is a one point eight five acre flag lot located within the R one A zoning district. It's bounded by other low density, single family homes in Atherton to the west, south and north. And they gave it nativity Catholic school in the Valen Brosa Center and Menlo Park to the east. Uh, here we can see the orientation of the property with the location of the proposed garage relative to the neighboring properties. The site's home to actually one of the oldest residences in Atherton, the federal estate, a two-story Victorian style home dating to around eighteen eighty-five. You can see the house, the pavilion and the pool are clustered here in the northeast corner of the property. There's also an existing driveway support court and guest house located toward the front. Here, here is where a proposed one thousand four hundred and thirty-seven square foot detached garage would be located. With the same front setback as the, uh, excuse me, same required front setback of sixty feet as the main residence. This garage would utilize access from existing driveway and be located between an existing support court and the driveway and parking area. So here we can see the proposed garage relative to the existing structures on the property as well as the proposed setbacks for the garage. As you can see, it's proposed to be set back a good distance from the neighboring properties. Uh, the sixty feet from the rear yards of the neighboring properties at one twenty-four and one thirty-six Glenwood. And the rear of the Valen Brosa Center and Menlo Park. The garage locations join most closely to areas where similar uses are permitted on adjoining properties. And here are proposed elevations for the new garage, the front elevation, that which is the primary access for the structure. Is going to be situated facing the existing parking area and driveway. Atherton municipal code section seventeen point four zero point zero three zero allows detached accessory buildings and structures. Located on flag lots to have the same front yard setback as the main residence with the issuance of a special structures permit. Without that permit, this accessory building would need to have a front setback of either a hundred and twenty feet. Or thirty feet behind the front line of the main residence, whichever would be less. Staff finds this application meets the three required findings to grant the special structures permit. First, the proposed building or structure will not negatively impact neighboring properties with respect to privacy and view. A combination of the setback distances, the proposed building itself, combined with the location of existing buildings and structures on neighboring properties. Will assist to screen these areas of new construction from neighboring properties and the public right of way. Will also not substantially impact neighboring properties with respect to privacy and view. Second, this proposed building complies with all their development standards, restrictions or limitations. The proposed building or structure such as height and landscape screening. The structure does meet all other development standards, including for floor area and height. I will note that while no landscape screening plan is required for the standards of chapter seventeen point five zero. Or the landscape screening chapter of the Atherton municipal code. The planning commission may amend the draft special structures permit, which is attachment one, to request additional screening as a condition of approval. Third, the granting of the special structures permit is consistent with the objectives of the general plan and this title. As we noted, the proposed garage is consistent with all of the, all the other development standards. The town arborist reviewed the plan submitted and determined no heritage trees will be impacted. There are no tree protection zone exceptions or tree removals being requested to accommodate the proposed garage. Notice of this application was mailed to all property owners within five hundred feet. The town has not received any public comment or inquiries to date. We do have a couple of members of the applicant team here. They can speak to any. Outreach or, uh, follow-up they've received from neighbors on this item. So to grant the special structures permit, the planning commission must make the findings contained in chapter seventeen point one five. The planning commission may grant the special structure permit if it makes these findings. As indicated above, staff believes the project demonstrates the ability to meet these required findings. Specifically, the garage will not impact heritage trees, meets all the, all the required setbacks. Will be screened from neighboring properties in the public current way. Uh, and again, beats all other development standards. The planning community could deny or modify the request to approve the requested SSB. Well, staff and the applicant are available to answer any additional questions. Thank you. And I yield my team, my time back to the chair.
All right, thank you. Any questions of, uh, of staff on this one? All right, then, uh, I'll, I'll open up the public, uh, hearing for our most patient applicants. Uh, and we'll go ahead and, 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 uh, hear from the applicant or the representative and. I can't tell who that would be. Is it Lauren or Megan? Megan?
Hi, Megan Jones with Laura Designs. Uh, Lauren's here as well, the principal.
All right.
On the project, um, Raft did a great job explaining, um. Yeah, we're looking for. Um, permission to locate the garage at the sixty foot setback. Um, we had looked. When we were, visited the site originally. Um, we, we've been, we've worked on the project before they put a pavilion in the, the rear of the. Of the lot a couple of years ago. So we're familiar with the site. And we're looking at locations to look at the garage and walking around, it felt like the. Locating it directly off that existing drive. Seemed like the best spot to locate it. There's already a drive there between the, the circle drive and the. And the sports court. And that was our motivation to locate it there versus looking back at the hundred and twenty foot setback. It kind of lands right in that mid central location of the lawn. And it's the first thing you see when you drive down the, the drive versus seeing the, the old home. Um, and then in addition to that, the goal is to match the materials to that existing cottage nearby. And blend in some of the horizontal siding that's on the existing house. And keep the eaves tight, which goes, matches the existing guest house and, and existing house. And as far as neighbor outreach, the owners did reach out to adjacent neighbors to see if they wanted to discuss further. Had any questions and didn't hear back any, anything. Positive or negative. Sound set up unless Lauren has anything else to add.
No, I, Megan, that's perfect. I, yeah, I think it's, um, this owner's. Desire is that these additional structures that we added, the pavilion in the back and then this new structure. He really wants it to blend with the property so that, as Megan just touched on that, as well as. Um, they do have this big lawn in the middle of the home that, um. Sort of leads to this big historic home. And they really didn't want to, you know, push structures onto that space. And so. As Megan mentioned, it just kind of made sense to kind of pull it. Which is why we're in this situation. Pull it away from the house and keep it tight to that other existing structure. But close to the drive. So we didn't have to add more hardscape and more drive to the property. It just sort of was already there, sexually sitting on where some of the driveway currently exists, so. Least disruptive.
Yep. All right, thank you. Any questions?
None for me.
And I don't see anybody that could be here to talk on this item unless, unless, uh, Paul wants to, but, uh. Uh, he's, he's just, he's just so enthralled by the meeting. He stayed for the excitement. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back. Uh, by the way, this, this, uh, this is my kind, I, I don't know if I can see it. This is my kind of driveway, uh, my, my kind of garage. I'd be talking about renting space. But I still have these cars. I get rid of most of them. Uh, but, uh, anything, anything here that, uh, anybody wants?
That's our client. Yeah. Yeah.
Anything, any, any comments before we get a motion?
That for me.
Right, ready for a motion?
I'll move, uh, I move that the planning commission approved the special structures permit to allow detached accessory building. Garage to have the same front yard setback as the main residence at one five one Laurel Street. Based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, subject to the conditions listed in the special structures permit certificate.
What a brilliant motion.
I will second.
Moving and seconded.
It's, it's all, it's all in the delivery.
We're going to call you the maestro from now on.
All right, uh, who's doing the roll call on this? Ralph, are you doing the roll call all the way through or?
Stephanie, intermediate?
Through the chair, I'll do the roll call.
All right, very good.
Uh, Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Narnsec.
Yes.
And Commissioner Conse.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I thank you for all for staying, uh, late, uh, on our, on our meeting. Uh, seven oh nine is late for these, these.
Wow, you are losing your, you are losing your touch. I'm just saying.
I know, it's usually a forty, thirty-five minute thing.
Can you grow your hair long? You used to get them done in like forty-five minutes.
Well, my hair was longer. We had shorter meetings. All right.
Chairman, I also want to, I wanted to apologize. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. I had a family emergency.
Oh, I, I understand that.
Had called in late, but I wasn't able, yeah.
That's fine. I appreciate, I'm glad it wasn't, wasn't something with you. So the health was, so that's good. All right, so we're on to item five, staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lauren and Ryan.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, two quick things I just wanted to bring to the commission's attention. From your last meeting, there were two items, um, that made their way to the city council. Meeting last week, uh, one was the, uh, first reading for consideration of introduction of the SB nine ordinance. And that indeed got, um. Approved by the city council. It'll go back in March for final adoption. And then there was an appeal filed on the application from last month's meeting at one Elm. That was the removal of the three heritage trees and the city council, um, did deliberate quite a bit. And, uh, voted to, um, uphold the appeal. So reverse planning commission's decision and approve the removal of the three trees.
What?
Wow.
What? Get the goalie on the line.
Hey, I told you guys, I voted the right way. You guys got to get, like, good with program.
That, that is outrageous.
Wait, if you, did you guys go to the property itself? If you, if you went to the property itself, that, that made the difference for me, but, you know. But it was, I, I glad it was a long discussion. So they actually went through the whole discussion then. Is that right, Stephanie?
Yeah, very long discussion. There was a lot of back and forth. They certainly, um, appreciated all the contemplation at the planning commission level. They looked at, I gave them the minutes, uh, as well as the link to the video. I think most of them actually did indeed watch those. Um, I think all, all the council members visited the site. They acknowledged in their minds that they thought that was, it was a challenging site and that was their final decision.
I quit.
You're going to take your marble to go home.
We just got you a nickname of maestro. You can't quit now.
That puts me in such a bad mood.
I feel great. I don't know what's wrong with you guys.
All right, just don't take it personally, whatever.
Yeah, I think everything personally, it's.
No, 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 no. I'm too old to take it personally. All right, uh, Ralph, you have any staff report for us?
No, I was just going to say Perry, if it helps, I got a, an email today from a woman who was very upset about the decision and asked for the, uh, the emails. For all the city councillors, so.
Tell her to call the goalie. The goalie is.
All right, all right, uh, item number, uh, item number six, uh, commissioner reports. You know, I, and I want to show you a typical sixty-two year, sixty-two year old, you know, historic home, you know? Mr. Eichler made this himself, you know, so. It's actually reversed because the pool's, the, the picture comes up reversed, but that's.
None of palm trees on that side.
Yeah, they're right. The palm trees are in front. The nineteen, nineteen fifty-nine Eichler, that's what they look like.
There's no windows on that building.
Oh, you, you know what? I, I thought you were going to say that, so I, so I, I, I made sure I had a, uh. Uh, a, a copy of the, of the, of the living room. There's, there's inside both sides. There's, there's both, both sides, this side and the other side are. The, the outside, it actually has more windows. So you're looking right out the atrium. So this is the backyard. So when you're in it, it's like there's no, there's no walls. On the outside, it looks like there's no windows. So it's, that's what the, the Eichler thing was. So it's, that's what the, the Eichler thing was.
Yeah.
Anyway. So any, any, any other commissioner, commissioner reports?
Other than I moved to close this meeting.
Are you, oh, oh, wait a minute. Let's go to item, item number seven. I'm ready for motion adjourned.
I'm trying to get you back under an hour.
All right, there's a motion adjourned. Does I hear a second Nancy?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, very good. All right, kind of a roll call on the motion adjourned.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Narnsec.
Yes.
Commissioner Conce.
Yes, thank you.
Gabia, thank you. I'm glad you made it. I'm glad the, the health issue was, hopefully that's been solved, but I'm glad it wasn't you. So.
Yeah, it was my husband. He wasn't under the weather, so he's okay now.
All right, good. All right, good. So we'll see you all next month. What's the date on next month? What's the date on next month?
March twenty-third.
March twenty-third. See you on the twenty-third.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Bye, thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you so much.